And that there is greater wisdom than that which can be derived from us alone. I thank you for these governmental leaders who recognize the importance of declaring that the state is not the highest authority, that everyone benefits from beginning by remembering that it is in God we trust. Watch over these proceedings tonight. May they be characterized by justice, truth, wisdom, and peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, I will, item number one on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the April 24th regular city council meeting and work session.
Make a motion, will you approve the minutes as presented?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any changes or additions or deletions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number two is the report of the mayor. Mayor Sullivan?
I'm here tonight to recognize a few folks instead of giving my traditional report of the mayor. But first, I'm going to recognize this month as National Tennis Month before we get to the everything else. I think we have a big contingency of tennis players here. Y'all want to raise your hand? There we go. I think they're trying to make a point by being here, right? So Tomas, do you want to come up? Mary Gammer, you want to come up since you're our representative on the reg board for so long for tennis? So this says from the Office of the Mayor, proclamation National Tennis Month, whereas on May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City to create rules and standards for the emerging game of lawn tennis. Whereas the USTA is the nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals. Whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world with over 700,000 members from every corner of the country. Whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability, which we know because Alex plays, right Jay?
That is correct.
Just kidding. Whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of Fairhope of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. Whereas USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits. Now therefore, I, Sherri Sullivan, Mayor of Fairhope, do proclaim May 23rd, 2023, as National Tennis Month and urge the citizens of Fairhope to become aware and support National Tennis Month.
All right, so I'll be brief. I know you've got a lot of things to do, so I just wanted to thank Mayor Sullivan and city council for recognizing this day and the national celebration of tennis. I also wanted to thank everybody here, and there's much more of them at the tennis center and the pickleball courts these days, for real support and for everything you do and for really appreciating what we have because we have a great tennis center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't leave them. We're going to get a picture before y'all leave. Okay. Now to the number two thing that we're going to do. I'm going to recognize our scholarship recipients from AMEA. So AMEA is a wholesale power provider for public utilities which we buy power from in other cities across the state of Alabama. They award 40 scholarships totaling more than $100,000 every year. They give four $2,500 scholarships here in Fairhope. And to be eligible, you have to be an electric customer for the city of Fairhope and you have to be going to a college located or vocational school in the state of Alabama. So we have our recipients this year. We have one that could not attend, that is Braden, and I'm not even going to pronounce his last name. It's M-A-H-A-T-E-K-E-R. Mahadkar? Thank you. Mahadkar, Braden Mahadkar is a senior at St. Michael Catholic School and he cannot be here tonight. But we also have three other recipients, and if y'all would like to come up, Delaney Hart, Hannah Markoli, I don't think I pronounced that one right either, and Richard Smith. So Delaney Hart is a senior at Fairhope High School. She plans to attend Auburn University and study chemical engineering. She is a member of the Future Business Leaders of America, the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society, and she is a team captain for the cross-country team. In 2021, she was named the Bowen County Cross Country Champion. Delaney is also a Thomas Hospital Junior Volunteer. Do you want to tell them what your plans are?
I'm going to Auburn next year, and I'm doing pre-PA now, so yeah.
Congratulations. We're going to take a picture. Okay, and the next recipient is, I've got too many papers, is going to be Hannah, and spell it, pronounce your last name. Markioli. She is a senior at Fairhope High School and plans to attend the University of Alabama, majoring in kinesiology. Hannah is a member of the National Honor Society. She is a member of the school's varsity volleyball team. Hannah officiates at middle and high school volleyball games through the National Federation of the High School Volleyball Association. Did you want to say anything about your future plans or anything? No? Come on, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm actually going to Auburn, not Alabama. To study exercise science, so basically kinesiology, but thank you.
We'll clap for you even though you're going to Auburn.
And now we have Richard Smith's mother here. He actually goes to a boarding school in Virginia, and they are electric customers, so he is not here tonight. He goes to Woodbury Forest School. And, my notes here, Richard is a senior at Woodbury Forest School. He plans to attend the University of Alabama and major in business or finance. He's a member of the school's investment club and a member of the indoor track and field and varsity soccer teams. His community service includes Camp Blue Skies Council, Habitat for Humanity, and the Appalachian Service Project. Congratulations. There you go. Thank y'all so much for being here tonight. So while we're talking about AMEA and what Councilmember L was talking about, we had the Power Supply Conference last week, and Fairhope Public Utilities was recognized for reliable electric service to our community. So we received national recognition from APPA, the American Public Power Association. And the APPA is a trade group that represents more than 2,000 nonprofit community-owned electric utilities across the United States. So really great to get this award, really excited about it. It just engages our reliability based on other utilities our size and across the country and just lets folks know that we take a lot of pride in making sure we're offering a cost-effective, reliable service to our customers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one other duty tonight, and then I'm going to let y'all get back to the real meeting. So tonight, we also want to recognize the junior city council. Ellery, is that where you are? Yeah, okay, they're all back here. Thank y'all for coming in. So I need Ellery, Ava, and Ella. She's not here? Okay, she's working, she's working. She works for really mean people, right? Yeah, she does, at the pool. Good, good. So tonight, we are recognizing the junior city council for their efforts this year. We're recognizing the seniors. I think Joe was the only one not here, correct? Okay. He probably, I think he had to go to a school visit or something?
He has a piano.
Okay, I knew it was something really important that he had to be at, but wanted to recognize the junior city council for their efforts throughout the year and just for, just their dedication to the city and learning more about local government. So we have Ellery, who is a senior tonight. Ellery Scott?
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Sullivan. I have had such a wonderful time serving on this council for two years, and it has not only taught me so much more about government than I ever think I would get the opportunity to know, but just about how important our community is and that we keep it running and just how many sides go into keeping our community running. As a senior, you know, I just thought it was, somebody makes a decision and it happens, but I got to really learn the logistics behind it, and it's been a really incredible process, so thank you.
Tell us what you're doing next year.
I will be attending the University of Alabama, double majoring in public relations and musical theater.
Ellery was just in the production, the ESRT production, and so this was probably her first night off in many nights, so thank you for being here.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for being here. So also, I just wanted to say one thing that always makes me really happy to hear. I know I talked to Joe's mom the other night, and she was just saying the same thing, even as an adult living in our community. She said, "It's so nice to hear him come home and talk about the things that happen in city government." She said things that I wouldn't even really know about, but it kind of gives me a different perspective, so it's really nice to have these young folks engaged. So in the next recipient we have is Ava Cockey. Ava is at St. Michael's?
Yes, Mike.
She's at St. Michael's, and she is a senior and has been involved in our community for a long time. Her dad, John, has been involved with the soccer community, so just Ava, thank you for what you do and thank you for being part of the junior city council.
I was only on the council for one year, but I did feel like I learned a lot about what goes into running our community, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be on the council. And I will be attending the University of Alabama in the fall studying interior design, specialty in spatial planning and historical preservation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and Ella's not here, but we will get her at a future meeting, so we can recognize her as well. Her and Joe, maybe her and Joe can come to the next meeting together. Okay, good, thank you. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much. We're going to step outside and do a few pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Give everybody a quick second.
I was really worried.
That's why I walked in.
Seventy-five people.
That's why we walked back in the door and said, "What's going on?"
It's a hot button issue. It's a funny thing, is you know, you go back three years and every single meeting is like that, butterflies walking around.
All right, so we will now move on to public participation for agenda items. If you have something on the agenda items five through 19, now is your opportunity to speak. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
We are agenda item number 19. My name is Jimmy Prestwood. I'm currently on the board of the Eastern Shore Art Center. With me is Bryant Whalen, the executive director of the art center. On May the 18th, we are going to have one of our largest fundraisers and expect approximately about 300 people. The fundraiser takes place from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and we'd like to close Oak Street from Section Street to Bancroft Street in order to facilitate us putting a tent out front. And we're going to have an antique vehicle of sorts that's also a cooker that we'd also like to put out there. And generally, for the safety of our patrons and sponsors that'll be attending the event.
Yeah, we discussed this in the work session, and the representative for the police department was present and stated they did not have any objection to closing the street for this event. So I do not believe you'll have any issues when we vote on this, but stranger things have happened.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to sit through the preceding 18 items on the agenda.
I think, I think you're going to be okay. Anybody else on items five through 19? All right, seeing no one, we'll go and close public participation and go into item number four, which is council comments. Councilmember L.
Well, you have any comments tonight other than I was really thankful for the news that Richard gave us in the work session on the roof. It's not real, maybe newsworthy to most, but it was newsworthy to the council.
Yeah. Okay, Councilman Conyers?
I'd just say, congrats to all the folks in ESRT. They had a great performance this weekend. If you had a chance to catch it, if not, I'm sure they'll be doing something exciting in the fall, so it was a great show.
Councilman Boone?
No comment.
I don't have any comment either. We will go right on to item number five, which is a resolution that the city council approves the compensation and job classification plan for the snack bar crew leader, grade of pay five, and to defund one snack bar attendant position, grade of pay three in the golf department.
Make a motion, will you approve the resolution?
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number six is a resolution that certain items are declared surplus and that the mayor and city treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of personal property owned by the city of Fairhope by one of the three methods listed on the resolution.
Make a motion, will you approve the resolution with the addition of the items that Richard brought up during the work session?
Yeah, and I think, I think he specifically listed four items, or four, I guess it's technically six items, but four categories, yeah, four different categories. All right.
You want to state those?
Yeah, we can. One is a 1GE 416 KVA voltage regulator. Two is three Siemens 416 KVA voltage regulators. Item number three is one US transformer, 2,327 gallon, and then the other is another US transformer, 2,327 gallon.
Aluminum copper windings.
Copper, yeah, aluminum copper windings, yeah, sorry. All right, so I have a motion. You have a motion, not a second?
I'll second a motion.
I've got a motion and a second.
Secondly amended motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Richard. Obviously, anytime we can get rid of stuff we're not using and make money off of it and take it off our shelves, that's great. Item number seven is a resolution that the city council hereby approves and authorizes the city of Fairhope to execute a memorandum of understanding between Outto Point Health Systems, Inc. and the Fairhope Police Department for Administration of Pre-Employment Screenings. We didn't talk about this at work session, guys, but this is standard for our police department to have these screenings at Outto Point.
Make a motion, will you approve this presented?
All right. I've got a-
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number eight is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a municipal lease agreement between the city of Fairhope and 329 South Grino LLC. Counsel, this again is the space on Grino that we've discussed. I know some of us went and looked at it. I think the property has changed hands since the last time we discussed it, but ultimately the lease is, and the cost is going to be about, I think, it says 7,500, but I think there's some shared expense. I think we're looking at closer to $8,500 a month is the expectation.
Is that right? Is the insurance, the 40% of the insurance approximately $1,000 a month?
With insurance, my, this last calculation with the tax rate, which was pre-sale tax rate, Ted Joe had done a reevaluation based on the sale amount, and that and the insurance, insurance is about 22 grand a year. That amount can go right at $8,500 a month, and then we've got our insurance and whatever we're helping to build up to.
Yeah. So that's 22,000, we paid 40% of that, and then-
40% of the taxes, whatever.
And then how much of the taxes?
They were like $3,000 prior to the sale, but I-
But it added, bottom line was it added 1,000 a month, right? What's that? I was just, I was trying to come up with that, so 12,000, 7,500 times 2, it was about $7.50 a square foot.
Yeah.
It's going right downtown.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Somewhere around there, 25 to 30.
Doesn't sound too bad, does it?
Doesn't sound too bad at all. All right, counsel, I don't have any-
Even with the 3% escalator?
Even with the 3% escalator, that's right. We're on the Grino road space. All right, counsel, I will entertain a motion for item number-
So moved.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with O'Donnell and Associates, Inc. to perform professional services for professional hydrogeologic and environmental services for well fields one, three, and four, where they not to exceed amount of $16,200. We heard about, this was explained again in the work session.
So moved.
Got a motion-
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 10 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with O'Donnell and Associates, Inc. to perform professional services for remote groundwater level monitoring as part of the Fairhope Water System Planning Project, Phase One, where they not to exceed amount of $13,500.
A quick question on that.
Yeah.
Where's Tim? This monitoring, is this going to be something that's annual? Tim, I mean, are they going to monitor this from now to eternity, or is that just during the build-out of the new treatment plant?
No, it'll be something we want to watch, handle. We'll be able to each monitor this, you know, through the computer system and, you know, like I asked.
Okay.
This will be an annual thing.
But is this, is the contract, how far, how long is this contract? Is this one year?
Yes, it is.
It's one year?
Yes.
Okay, so we get another bite at it every year then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, counsel, do I have a motion?
If not, I'll move to approve it, execute the contract.
I've got a motion-
Aye.
And a second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of Kavanaugh McDonald Consulting LLC to perform professional consulting services to prepare actuarial valuation for the city's OPEB liability for fiscal year ending 9/30/23, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract with an estimated amount of $10,000. Mayor, will you just tell them briefly what this is?
This is actually, I think we do this every year, but it's starting actually the audit for next year. So this is something that we do every year to get ready for the audit.
Counsel, any questions for the mayor on item number 11?
Make a motion, will you approve?
All right.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 12 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute amendment number one to the contract for professional engineering services for asbestos inventory and abatement plan at the K-1 Center with Southern Earth Sciences, Inc. to add additional services in the amount of $12,450, which increases the not to exceed amount limit to $22,850.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the amendment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 13 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute amendment number two to the contract for archaeology monitoring for the Arts Alley Transit Hub Project with Terra Explorations, Inc. to add additional services in the amount of $25,000, which increases the not to exceed amount limit to $45,000. I mean, not an arrowhead, nothing, I mean-
Not even a button.
All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion for item number 13, if you are so inclined.
So, so moved. Nobody wanted to step up first, huh?
Silence.
I'll still make the motion.
All right, so Kevin made the motion, and now I need a second.
I'll second that.
It's the most painful motion and second I think we've ever had. All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Can we vote both, can we vote both ways on that?
Yay, because we have to, and nay, because we hate it.
Nay, because we don't want to.
All right, item number 14 is a resolution to award bid for spray foam insulation at the Recreation Center Gymnasium for the Recreation Department to APC Spray Foam LLC with a total bid cost of $88,783.
Move to award the bid.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 15 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute amendment number one for Founder's Park Athletic Track and Additional Parking Project for the replacement of the 720 linear feet that has failed with a cost of-
Yep. I got it, I got it covered.
Okay, all right.
I'm going to make a motion to authorize and execute the amendment number one, option one, with an amount of $235,224.70.
Okay, all right. Counsel, Richard explained this to us, the different options and a recommendation for option number one as presented in the work session. That was the amount that Jack just read.
Was that a motion, counsel?
That was a motion.
That was a second.
To award option one.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Counsel, any further discussion? Richard, I do appreciate you going back and doing what you can to save what you could in this. I know, again, unforeseen expense, it happens.
Covers that, some of that spray foam insulation.
Covers, covers the difference in the spray foam, that's right. All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number 16 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for roadway and parking improvements project at Volanta Sports Park with a cost of $10,119.55, and to award change order number one to McWhanney Construction Company. The new contract total will be $467,579.26.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to inform and submit the Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Program Report for 2022 to the Department of Environmental Management.
Make a motion, will you approve? Resolution?
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 18 is a resolution that city council hereby authorizes and approves the request from the Fairhope Avenue Merchants to close Fairhope Avenue from Section Street to Church Street for First Friday Art Walk at 5:00 p.m. and reopen after art walk.
Is there somewhere in there where it says a term of three months the mayor suggested in the work session?
I don't think it says it in the resolution, but we could add that to-
Do we want to add or just keep that in the back of our mind?
I think-
Month to month, it doesn't matter, whatever y'all want, however y'all want to handle it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the way this resolution is written, it's just sort of open-ended, that it's just closed on Fridays.
I don't think one month is going to be enough to-
No, I think you're probably right. And so maybe if we want to add, if we want to amend that-
You just want to do it, though, and then you can come back and say, well, if it does not work out, we just pull the plug on it?
Yeah, I think that's fine, too. I don't, I mean, I don't know that you have to do it any specific way right now. We're going to give it, we're going to vote to give it a shot, and then we can, we can readdress it in any bottom.
Well, if it's just a test project, if the test doesn't pass out, you just revoke it.
If the test doesn't pass out, you just revoke it.
That's right.
Well, I think that's good enough. We're going on record that we're going to...
Yeah, that we're going, we're going to keep it, keep an open mind and see how it looks moving forward. Okay? All right. Do I have a motion, Lisa?
No, you do not.
Can I have one?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, I mean, again, I think this is something we'll just keep an eye on, and if it works, we can do it again, and if it doesn't, then we'll readdress it. All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number nineteen is a request from James Prestwood, board of, board president of the Eastern Shore Art Association, DBA Eastern Shore Art Center, requesting the use and closure of Oak Street between Section and Bancroft Streets for their annual fundraiser event, Fifth Annual White Linen Night on May 18th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and permission to serve alcohol during this event.
Make a motion, will you approve the request?
Second.
Stuck around just to make sure, right? All right. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Do you guys have a license to serve alcohol on the street then? Or Shane, how does that?
No, so they're still stays inside.
They'll be served inside, okay.
That's just for the people that will spread out the alcohol, that's why they have the office.
Okay.
The permit does include the patio area as well as the parking lot, but we will have signage consistent for the...
Okay. There was a discussion earlier in the work session about when the Fairhope Avenue was closed, would that be allowed, which, which is a no, so, didn't want to have any false expectations.
Perfect. All right, Lisa, I've got a motion and a second.
Yes, you do.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number twenty is a reappoint, reappointments to the recreation board for Lisa Ashley and Scott Berry. Councilmember Earl?
Yeah, with the reg board unanimously approves of these reappointments. Scott's been around recreation in this city forever, and he's a fairly new member, and Lisa is also a fairly new member, but she is the current chairwoman of the board, so...
And, and that's with, both of these have terms that will expire May of 2028. God, it seems like a long time.
Ooh, that's a long time to be committed to.
Five-year term.
Wow.
All right, I've got a...
I'll make a motion to make a reappearance.
A second.
Got a motion and a second.